All right. The regular Cal City Council meeting of March 25th, or March 24th, sorry, to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada, Larson.
Here.
Smith, Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker, Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Five I.
All right, Zazada, Smith, and Walker, all of you know they wouldn't be able to be here. With that, Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. General Speaker, would you lead us in the lecture?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain Hyde D., as always. Yep. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell.
There we go. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
The agenda has been approved. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations, we have none. Then Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have a few here. First one is Mr. Charbot. And as a reminder, you have three minutes.
On January 9th, 2020 to 23, this council voted eight to nothing, not all of you, but those who were here, to give $100,000 of taxpayer money from ARPA funds to New Hope Missionary Baptist Church with the intention of building a community center on land owned by the church. Great idea. Love the idea of a community center. The ordinance stated the following, though: authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to New Hope Missionary Baptist Church in the amount of $100,000 from Fund 110. Now, it is considered improper for a governmental entity to give money to a religious institution. The ordinance referred to the recipient as being New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, not the name Project Hope Incorporated, IRS registration number 365022006. City records later show that the charitable organization that received the money was changed to Project Hope, even though the city ordinance stated the money was going to the church. Details and names are important. The promised community center has not been built as of today. There's no sign of any construction activity. According to the city council meeting minutes of November 28th, 2022, the part-time pastor told the council that the community center would be completed in three years. Completion target of three years from that date would be November of this year. I haven't seen any activity. I went to Carolyn's Ward Meeting, didn't see anything going on there as far as construction. Now, Project Hope is the name of the community center project that received the $100,000 in funds, according to city documents. Illinois statute, I want to bring this up because this is a city of DeKalb issue, not so much with the church. Illinois statute has strong laws regarding charitable organizations, recognizable charities, recognized charitable organizations. State of Illinois requires all charitable organizations that solicit and hold donations in Illinois are required to register with Attorney General Kwame Raoul's office. Members of the public can call 312-814-2595 to find out if a charity has ever been registered. It appears that the Illinois Attorney General's Office charitable database does not have Project Hope on file, and they never have. I checked, a few other citizens checked, it is not on file. It appears that not only has the city of DeKalb failed to follow up on the $100,000 that was sent to Project Hope, but the city also apparently failed to verify that Project Hope is registered with the state before sending the $100,000. Ronald Reagan once said, "Trust, but verify." The city of DeKalb failed to exercise due diligence. Why we didn't check, I don't know. I sent y'all emails, heard nothing back.
That's three minutes, sir. All right, moving on to the next one, Nancy Doherty.
Or Nancy, you want to speak at the others? Okay.
You can put me later.
I will, yeah. That sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bye.
And then, Tom Hapen. Come on up, Tom.
Mayor Barnes and members of the city council. I'm here today to express my support for the study for a possible roundabout at the intersection of First Street and Sycamore Road, and to try and clear up some misconceptions about this proposal. Last week, a local Facebook page posted a poorly manipulated video and some deceptive drawings on a map. The video is such an obvious dishonest cut, it doesn't need any more debunking. I wanted to discuss the image because it's a tangible representation of the size of the lie and the size of the liar. The image the page posted had a couple circles drawn on it on a map to represent around the roundabout. Circles were drawn centered on Sycamore Road and First Street. The larger the circles of the two circles reached the Pine and Augusta and First Street intersection. Google Earth says that the distance between Sycamore Road and the Pine and Augusta intersection at that point is about just under 600 feet. That would make that the representation in that drawing and the roundabout between 1,100 and 1,200 feet. For reference, the roundabout at Peace and Gerler Road is about 150 feet. For further reference, the Los Alamos Circle in Long Beach, California, one of the busiest roundabouts in the country, at the intersection of the Pacific Coast Highway and Lakewood Boulevard, handles 60,000 cars a day and is about 450 feet in diameter, roughly 40% the diameter of the, what was, and 17% the area when suggested by this cartoonish Facebook page. I'm not an engineer, but it seems like the best way to have a roundabout there would be to move it northeast, which would allow southbound traffic, smooth access, give Sycamore Road a better angle, and of course, not infringe on the Elwood House Park, which shouldn't be difficult with only three points converging. I look forward to seeing some drawings from engineers, which everyone should look at before passing judgment. Roundabouts are more efficient, safer, better looking than metal pipes and traffic lights, and importantly, less expensive, Mark. Lastly, I would like to encourage the public not to take seriously the ramblings of a disingenuous Facebook page run by a terminally online middle-aged man who's trying to live out a teenage fantasy of becoming a social media influencer by occupying the local pages of the geriatric cesspool known as Facebook and blatantly lying to increase engagement into his numbers to his delight for his page on that platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hapen.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments, we have none. And then moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 10th, 2025. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through March 24th, 2025 in the amount of $3,432,512 and 27 cents. And number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, February 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Consent agenda has been approved. All right, so moving on to H, Public Hearings, we have none. I, Considerations, we have none. So that gets us to J1, which is Resolution 2025-030, authorizing agreement for construction engineering services with Fairgram for the 2025 general street maintenance program in an amount not to exceed $252,000. Before I ask for a motion in a second, we do have public participation on this one from Nancy Doherty. Nancy.
Thank you.
Oh, the front row got it.
Okay. I understand this project overall is $4,200,000, and I understand you want to hire this particular firm, Fairgram, for the construction engineering at the 252,000. When I added, when I went down on the agenda to look for more information, these were the streets that we're talking about to do maintenance on. And not having lived here very long, I decided to take a picture of my map and kind of highlight where all those streets are. So my question to you is, who decided what streets were going to be maintained and under this project? And do you actually have an overall plan for road maintenance over the next period, two, three years, or whatever? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, I would take a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager, you want to start?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, in answer to the question made from the floor, and Zach Gil, our city engineer, is here, who can expound on this if you'd like. But we do have a plan. It's a five-year plan, and we, every year, just because roads can blow up, even when you don't expect them to, we do pavement condition index, which shows the condition of the streets that we thought would be in the plan for that year, and then make adjustments accordingly. Zach, you may, if you want to add to that.
That's my bad side, so that's why I didn't want to be in the floor. Yes, so we've got our assessment tools, and we've got our efficiency tools. So we do have a five-year plan. We, most communities always have one kind of in the works. We are currently operating under five-year plan 2024 to 2028. That was adopted by, so, excuse me, it was five years, right? Four, five, six, seven, eight. Those are your five years, stretching between those years. That plan was adopted by this council, I believe it was in the fall of '23 or so. So the way this works is, it's called PCI, Pavement Condition Index, and there's a uniform way that this is established by engineers through different field surveying tools. They measure the cracks, they measure flexibility in the pavement, all kinds of stuff that no one really wants to hear about. Anyways, those are given a rank, one to 100, 100 being the best, right? You get 100 on your test, you got a great, you got a brand-new road. So those are established countywide. I have a GIS map, I can pull it up. It looks like Christmas, greens, reds, all the colors there, right? And that shows me the rankings of your roads. That can be distilled down to finite, down to a single point, or in batches of 10, of 25, of a range, right? So what we do is we kind of step down and we look for these zones, we look for hotspots. So we have things like recently, you've seen some work in the Knowles, right, that's gone over the last few years. We get these hotspots, these lots of red areas, and so that shows that we have a lot in a certain poor condition there. And the reason that it's important is, there may be one road straggling over here that's maybe worse than those, but it is incredibly inefficient to go chasing around two or three blocks at a time, doing what they used to call worst to first. Just go do all the worst stuff, fellas, you know, very inefficient. So what we do is we work in zones, and we get this kind of a collection, high density of these ones that rank maybe in the 30s to the 40s. We go and we hit those, and that gives us a much greater price from the contractor, because they can work efficiently, so they give us good money, or, I'm sorry, good prices. We get more for our money. So, that's what we do. I look at those, we get a budget that the city manager and yourselves give me, and we say, "What fits in this basket?" And so we usually try to do a large zone and maybe a small zone. This year, when you increase the budget, instead of doing one big one, one small one, we said, "Hey, we can get two and a half, we can get two big ones and a small one here." So we kind of collected those. So it's a five-year plan, it's a guideline. It's not a guarantee of every inch of every street that gets done exactly what day. Like, we accelerated, he gave me more money, so we accelerated some things. And so, yes, there's a plan, and that's generally how it works.
Appreciate it. You might want to stay, possibly. City manager, you want to talk about this item, or is that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. We've got a lot of engineering on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
This first item concerns the street maintenance program, as Zach Gil was explaining to you. The, this year's program is, is estimated to be about $4.5 million. That's what's in the budget, the bids we're going over right now. We'll bring back to the next regular meeting, our recommendation on that. But the, the first step in order is to identify who is the, in the best position to provide the quality of oversight that we need. We have a proven company that in recent years has done the street maintenance, part of our overall street program, and it's more than just the annual street maintenance, the asphalt repaving. But they've done a very good job at that, and we recommend their bid, which is well within the, the overall allocation, which is usually about 6% of the total project, estimated project price. And Fairgram is our recommendation to you tonight.
Counsel, any questions? For Bill, for city engineer? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2025-030 passes. Moving on to number two, Resolution 2025-031, authorizing the award of a construction services contract to Landmark Contractors Incorporated in an amount of $206,050.25 for reconstruction of the pavement through the Annie Glidden Road underpass. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you. Last year, we had some savings in our overall street program, and we had just enough to do the northbound section. Also, we were bound by timing. When the street maintenance program was largely done, we only had about 30 days to try to get something bid and actually constructed and completed before the students came back, and we tore up that vital access to the NIU campus from the Annie Glidden interchange. So that was a successful contract. The contractor did very well for us in terms of speed and, and production and, and the overall performance. We went out to bid, as we said we would last year, to take up the other half, which is the southbound lane and lanes, excuse me. And we're talking about the UP Railroad Trestle, I think you're aware. And we got some bids, and the low, low bid is Landmark Contractors, a different contract, but they're, they're well-established and do a solid job. We've had experience with them, and we recommend their low bid price, which was $206,050.25.
Counsel.
I'm sure about the 25 cents.
I know, right?
How it worked out.
Any questions or comments, counsel?
I do have a question. So, so I think that last year's portion worked out well. You know, I think it's working great. But I, an observation, where you go from black, from blacktop to concrete.
Mm-hmm.
How do we manage that transition? Because it's already showing some wear at that transition point.
Sure. So the way typically, the way you would do that is you would pour the concrete first, and then you pave up against it, like we do with, you know, like curbs and things like that. In this case, when you get those small items like that, the cost to that, to have them mobilized, there's no other asphalt in the whole project. So we're asking them to mobilize to put in one little three-foot strip, all that equipment. So we chose to do a saw cut against that and pour against that asphalt. So we, we can manage that, whether as part of a larger patching program or things like that, or when we do our street maintenance, we're down there working in the Knowles, things like that.
Okay.
Are very much more economical to say, "Hey, go take the, the skid mill, do that. You've got 1,200 tons of asphalt, spray some, and then roll it down." So we can always address things like that.
Perfect. I was just kind of curious about it, because it's, you know, I believe it went really well, and then you say, "Well, it went really well," but, you know.
Yeah, we, we were up against money. I didn't want to see some $15,000 line item just to put in this much asphalt, because I had to mobilize the whole thing just, just for that, so.
So it'll just be folded as a part of a normal patch program.
Yeah, we'll address it more economically.
Good. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yep.
Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2025-031 passes. Moving on to J3, Resolution 2025-032, accepting the qualification-based selection of Fairgram to perform construction engineering services for the intersection reconstruction project impacting Lucinda Avenue and Normal Road, and authorizing the city manager to provide approvals on all standard Department of Transportation selection documents. We do have public comment on this. Yes, Nancy, you want to come back up? Nancy Doherty?
I would like to combine my comments between '032 and '033.
Okay.
Okay. Lucinda and Normal roundabout, I think we talked about that a year ago. We closed Normal to find out what impact it would have, not only to the students, but us who travel that road at one point in time. So I think it's gone very well. I think it's got a project to go forward. And I understand this project is $1,820,000. You're looking to hire, again, this particular company, Fairgram, in the amount of $198,000 to oversee the project. There was something that the city sedated on the agenda I didn't understand, and that was something I mentioned, it's $39,600. I don't understand that part, and I would appreciate, you know, an explanation. I also want to state that once this goes through, Lucinda Avenue is going to be closed, again, just like it was when the bridge was done, which means to get to Annie Glidden for me on First Street, I've got to go down to Lincoln Highway, or I go up to the infamous Hillcrest Road. So I'm wondering, how long is it going to take to actually put that roundabout in and reopen Lucinda Avenue? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I take a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
I'll speak to the contracts, but why don't we let Zach quickly deal with the timing and so forth? I could also deal with the pricing.
The $39,600 and timing.
Sure. So one thing, sorry, I'll make this a bit more general comment. We've seen a couple of these construction engineering contracts. The money we're spending isn't 100% ours in a lot of these occasions. Even the local one is MFT. Now, that's allocated to us, but the state has some oversight on how we spend that. So in all these scenarios, whether it's Lucinda, that's federal money, whether it's the state MFT, that's our local road paving contract, we need to have certified expertise oversee this, whether it's certifying materials, whether it's judging quantities, things of that nature and all that. They require we do that. It's not even by our, our choice. Now, we could do it in-house if you had a team of five me's running around or whatever, but we don't, we don't do that model. Anyways, the point is that when the larger projects are there, they also help us with that construction engineering cost, right? So the 198, I believe it is, that is the total contract. That is matched 80/20, 80 fed, 20 local. So the $39,000 is what we are paying locally, and they require that we show some sort of resolution authorizing this local expenditure, so we can't play dumb in the future and say, "Oh, I thought it was just a $200,000 contract, all on you." Oh, timing-wise, sorry. The, the full closure will go into place, I believe it's going to be May 13th. It's, it's the Monday after graduation. We've coordinated this with NIU. We had a good site meeting about two weeks ago on this, and it will be open by the time the students are back.
So summer project.
Mm-hmm, summer project. There is a detour route around it, full closure at the intersection, but you'll have to go up either Russell or Garden, you know. So you can get close to it, but then you'll get slightly routed up around it in that area if you choose to go down there, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I think city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
He did such a great job. I mean, it was like a mic drop, and he walked away.
He did a great job.
City manager.
I did want to say that another engineering, engineering firm did the design, so we are very comfortable in terms of the oversight of the actual construction project with Fairgram, and, and as Zach mentioned, this is, comes in two parts, because the first one is, is a qualifications-based selection, and then the second part is the actual construction oversight contract. So we recommend this, and we also recommend the next one, but I'll hold my fire on that.
Any other comments or questions, counsel? Thanks for the catch. All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2025-032 passes. Moving on to number four, Resolution 2025-033, authorizing an agreement with Fairgram to perform construction engineering services for the intersection reconstruction project impacting Lucinda Avenue and Normal Road in the amount of $198,000 and appropriating $39,600 of local funds. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say, this is a great deal for the city of DeKalb. We're paying 20% of this very large contract, and it's a surface transportation grant that comes initially from the federal government, goes through state IDA, and comes to us. And we've done some of those in the past. And I have to say, Zach Gil is a big reason for that. A lot of people at different levels really trust his expertise, and it shows here, as it has in other items on the agenda tonight.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2025-033 passes. Moving on to J5, Resolution 2025-034, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of structural firefighting gear from Air One Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $151,595 plus shipping costs. Can I have a motion to bring this one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another safety issue, but whole other content and location. Our fire department has, its services fall under some national rules and guidelines set by the National Fire Protection Association. One of the things that the NFPA has been looking at over a couple decades, really, is why there seems to be, particularly in retired firefighters of a certain age, higher incidence of certain kinds of cancers. And a lot of that has to do with the different fumes that they're, even with all their, their protective gear that they're around, and what gets on their clothing, even with all the, the best cleaning that we, we can do for those bunker, they call them bunker gear or protective gear, the, the heavy coat and pants and so forth. We, we have a outside of generally 10 years for the, the life of these, these gear sets. And coincidental with the opening of the new fire station, where we needed to buy a few more just for the newest employees, it's, it's time to turn over an additional 35 sets. And so, we got a better deal if we did them all at once than if we did it over two or three different deals over the course of the year. So thanks to Chief Thomas, went out, got some bids, and the, the lowest bid that we got was $151,595, which is divided by 45, it's, it's a pretty good price per set. And it's also something that's just essential to firefighter protection on the scene, and, and then when they're, even when they're training, and they've got the same set on. If you've ever dry cleaned overalls or coveralls that you use outside in your yard or whatever, they never get perfectly clean, and even with our best equipment, it's same here. So it's, we want to, we want to meet, we don't want to crawl over those thresholds. So recommend your approval of this, and I think it's a good price and the right thing to do.
Did you say dry-clean your overalls?
Well, it's...
I'm just teasing.
I, I press them, but I don't.
Any comments or questions, counsel? Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
You guys are keeping us safe all the time. And this is the least we can do is to get as much safety in your court as well.
Any others? All right, roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution 2025-034 passes. Moving on to J6, Approval in omnibus form of Resolution 2025-035, authorizing a special event agreement with DeKalb Corn Fest Incorporated for the 2025 Corn Fest. Then Resolution 2025-036, approving a nonprofit special event liquor license for the 2025 Corn Fest. And Resolution 2025-037, approving the regulation of traffic on Illinois Route 38, Lincoln Highway, for the 2025 Corn Fest. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
So every year about this time, we have usually three resolutions. I've been threatening to put them all into one, even though there are three parts to it. Or we could have done three resolutions and walked through, you having to read all those long ones. But it's, here's what it boils down to. There is an organization that does a great job in this every year. It's DeKalb Corn Fest, Inc. And so we permit them, in one of the resolutions, to conduct their event in our central business district. And the next one is that the same group is, is permitted to sell alcoholic beverages within certain prescribed areas under certain conditions during the festival. And then finally, we petition Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, to allow all this to occur on Illinois Route 38 between First and Fourth, and, and side streets. So that's what's before you tonight, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Looking forward to Corn Fest. Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Larson. Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I.
So Resolution 2025-035, and 2025-036, and 2025-037 all pass. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, Ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda Item L, Ordinances, first reading, we have none. Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Alderman Powell, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
We have our airport advisory meeting tomorrow night at the airport at 5:30.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
I want to revisit my thoughts from last meeting. Next week, we all have the ability to exercise what might be our greatest right, the right to vote. And since this is a local election, every vote counts and can make a bigger difference in our day-to-day lives than in a national election. Locally, there continues to be websites that post, and now even manufactures misinformation regarding candidates, as well as items that are currently being discussed and studied by municipalities. This is not about me, but about everyone who is on the ballot this election, and for every resident and voter in DeKalb. As a resident and voter, I hope that you are all as angry about this total disregard for the truth as I am. Thankfully, I know we have smart, involved, conscientious voters who are working hard to make DeKalb a place we all want to call home. However, the disrespect that these websites and their administrators show to each and every one of us is deplorable. I have been quietly polite in the past, but this has crossed the line of sharing your opinion and knowingly spreading lies. I will not allow people to respect not just council and city staff, but all of you who are quietly but diligently working to make our city our home with the votes you cast. As with everything, verifying not just the information, but the integrity of the website. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins?
Can I follow up on her thought?
Absolutely.
Because it's a very valid thought, and it's a, I'll get up on my soapbox for just a moment here, but from a broader level with our society, it's a problem that's created by an absence of media. When we did have media that was down the middle, it was all good. Now that, there's money to be made in media, there's a vacuum that's created when media leaves. We look at our local media, and we have literally limited media covering these things. So how do you get at the truth? It puts the burden of seeking that proof on all the taxpayers, on all the people. Otherwise, these two clowns here in the front row, repeating lie after lie after lie, is what's influencing our society. And it's too bad. It's a shame, because you get people trying to do the right thing, and these folks are skewing everything. And I don't know what to do with it about our society, because how do you get a good message out? How does a good message get to the people? You know? In the past, we want the city to be the city. But the absence of media, of someone who's down the middle telling a story, puts the city in a position of having to defend a roundabout, because someone is repeating a lie that's extrapolating, and it's a flat-out lie. And that's what people believe. So what I would just encourage people is, do some digging. Don't just believe the lie that's repeated on social media, because it is, it's social media. It's someone who's taking advantage of us, and it's frustrating. You know, I don't know, I don't know what to do about it. How do we, how do we, as a society, how do we get at what's the news? What's real? Sorry, I'll get up on the soapbox.
No, no, I...
I'm a little passionate about it, but it's...
Yeah, definitely, I think we all are, and we're all being incredibly reserved and professional and calm, in light of what's out there.
And when someone flat-out lies with a media clip, that's 180 degrees different from what it was intended to be, that's just wrong.
Yep.
And in one respect, I don't want to give these jokers the benefit, on the other respect, there are parties right now that are profiting by just repeating the same lie. Repeat the same lie, repeat the same lie, and then people begin to believe it. At a point, I'm at a point where I'm saying, you know what? I'm close to just calling the liar the liar. And be that blunt with it. Sorry. Thank you for listening to my little TED Talk.
Well, I think, I think we're seeing it more and more, individuals stepping up online and calling people on this, especially, we're beyond disingenuous in many of these comments now, like Alderwoman Larson and Alderman Perkins said, fabricating statements and perpetuating a lie that they created, causing a lot of negativity within the community that is not warranted. I just got to say, thank you to all of you that are starting to step up and show your voice online. We're seeing it more and more. Thank you for the Tom Hatmans that come up and say what you said, because the city staff, they're the ones, like, we don't care to be attacked and hear these things, right? But it's the city staff that works so hard, trying to do the best job that they possibly can, and this is the reward, is absolutely being vilified online. So it really is, it's heartwarming when individuals come up and call people on the lies that they're spreading. And I know it means the world to our city staff that work so hard, so thank you, Mr. Hatman, for what you did. And thank you to all the others online that are starting to post your opinion of what you're seeing out there. It's pretty awesome. Some of you are in the audience right now, smiling inside, I know. All right, anything else on this?
I think that about...
I think you both handled it very, very well.